I'm going to call to order the City of Kingman City Council Work Session Meeting of the City Council. All work session items listed here are for discussion only, no call, no action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. If appropriate circumstances, inappropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the council or of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. We'll have call to order by Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins is excused. Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Eric? Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, if you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Part one of our work session today is Community Development Department Evaluation. The city hired Mr. Stuart Schmeling to complete an evaluation of the community development process. Mr. Schmeling will be presenting the attached report regarding his review to the city council. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions regarding his report and professional opinions during this session. Manager Miller?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor and council, so as the Vice Mayor read, we do have Mr. Schmeling here today. Mr. Schmeling is a development services and a planning professional, has multiple years of experience in those areas, and he was contracted by the city back in August to actually conduct an evaluation of the community development department. So before you tonight, he's going to present you with his, basically his observations, his findings and recommendations, and feel free to ask questions along the way. And then, you know, this is a good segue into the next item, which we'll get into, and that's the zoning code update discussion as well. I also want to remind you, we added at last minute last Friday, an e-session. There is a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight, so we want to try to get wrapped up in our public portion of the meeting tonight by 4:30 because Planning and Zoning does start at 5:00. So we'll be able to convene the meeting out here for planning, excuse me, for the executive session, and we'll be able to conclude the executive session in the conference room. I know that's counter to what we typically do, but by the time we do that, you'll have a public meeting going on in here for Planning and Zoning. So I just wanted to just let you know that things will be a little bit different than what you're accustomed to. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schmeling, who will be going into his report.
Thank you, Grady. Is this on? First, a little bit about myself, resident of Lake Havasu City. I've worked in, I have a degree in planning, and I worked in municipal planning for about 33 years, the past 22 in Lake Havasu City as a staff planner, and then ultimately at the end of my career as the director for the last three years or so. And I, Ron and I met just at the suggestion of a colleague. I had a, I recently retired, I suppose I should add that as well, doing a little bit of consulting work on the side. A colleague introduced me to Ron, suggested that he may, he may want to pick my brain for some questions, whatever, and we started talking about some of the issues and concerns that you all had relative to the planning process, specifically the subdivision process. And so what we thought we could do is I could analyze some things, put some stuff together. At that point, we didn't have a contract or anything, and within a couple of weeks, he ended up getting terminated. I reached out to Tina, found out that you were still interested in doing something like that, so I tried to go with what Ron was looking for, put that information together, brought it back to Tina and Grady, and now obviously we can go through that and talk a little bit about what you, what you have here. Is that going to come up for me somewhere here? Okay.
And then you just really need to make sure you speak into the mic.
Okay. I'll try to do that. I don't think I've ever been told I've soft-spoken, but I'll do it. Is this going to go for me? I went through some of this already. A colleague reached out, I met with Mr. Foggan. He was terminated. Once that, once I reached out to Tina, we got a contract together. Our, my primary focus was on land use, all the land use processes in the planning division, specifically subdivisions. And then I also looked at the internal review process, pre-app meetings, et cetera. I looked at your printed material, your applications, your handouts. I looked at your submittal deadlines, timeliness of your applications, and internal, external communication and staffing levels. And in, as part of that whole package, I went through staff interviews in late August, and then the next slide will be the table of the research conducted comparing other Arizona cities as well as cities within Mojave County. When you pair, when you compare government departments, divisions, it's very difficult to get apples to apples. Every city has something similar, but they don't do the same things. Different states have different state regulations, and so Ron and I felt that it was probably the most, the best comparison, you know, apples, at least to crab apples or to green apples or something, to take other cities within Arizona of similar size. And so I looked at the two closest, which were Sarita and San Luis, and then also to compare the cities in Mojave County, Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City, not necessarily because of population, but because of similar applications and similar clients as well. I mean, a lot of people that do business, contractors and architects, engineers, do those things in Havasu, Bullhead, as well as Kingman. So if you, if you start, the population, obviously, as I stated, is very similar in those cases, Havasu being the biggest of those communities. One of the things I found was that all of the cities in the study have a department dedicated to planning and zoning, whether they call it planning, zoning, planning and building, as you see here, development services, whatever it's called, it is a department that specifically relates to planning. And going one step further, the next column over, the planning staff, most of those departments all included planning staff, building staff, and three out of the four, or yeah, three out of the four, also included code enforcement staff. Now, when I looked into this, my primary focus was planning staff, but as these things that related kept coming up, I felt that it was necessary to at least put those, put those in the table. One of the primary focuses of the study was the timeline, specifically how you treated subdivisions, and if you look, 90 business days seem to be the common theme for the most part. You submit yours or have yours submitted in 95 days, so it's, it's right on par for the most part with the, with the other cities. Lake Havasu City is 45 days, and I think part of that is because our planning commission meets twice a month as opposed to once a month. All the other cities, their planning commissions meet once a month as well, and so we have the opportunity through scheduling, because even though both the planning commission and the city council are part of that process, there's delays that can occur as a result of not getting all the information to you in time or to the commission in time, or depending on whether you're having special sessions or whatever. It allows Lake Havasu City ease, easier scheduling, less conflicts, therefore, I believe that's why the 45 days is, shows up on there, that's, seems to be the odd one.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt. Where did you?
Go ahead, Counselor Staley.
Oh, I am so sorry.
That's all right.
I, it's deep in thought there. Where did the 95 business days come from?
Though, that's from the printed material that you, from your applications, when you, when you have.
Okay.
And, and I was not only reviewing subdivisions, because that was the specific concern, I was also looking at conditional use permits, rezonings, text amendments, all the others. So I, I secured all your information, all your printed information, which by the way, you did very well. That was part of, and when I went through this and tried to score these or compare them, your applications were very easy to read. You also have to remember that in this process, not only do you have professionals that deal with the staff, but you also have citizens that try to go through this process as well. So I looked at the handouts, and I looked at handouts that were provided by other, these other communities, and Kingmans were very well-written and, and very well-laid out for your average homeowner to be able to understand and be able to follow through on the, on those programs.
Vice Mayor and council, I just also want to just clarify, so this is subdivision plat, not necessarily building permit turnaround time. So if it's a building permit that has to do with the subdivision?
Correct. And I didn't get.
So, but I think that's where the council member might have been coming from, perhaps.
Well, I, I just don't think it's been anyone's experience lately to get a 95-day turnaround, and I just wanted to clarify that you just saw that on, on a form.
Paper.
But you did not go back and actually look at how long we're taking to really go through this process.
That is correct.
Okay.
I did not go through the process. I, and we could have expanded to do something like that. I did not physically take an application and walk it through the system just to see how long it would take. Another thing that, that I was asked to look for were the fees, just to see if you were on par. I have all the fees listed there. Every city chooses to have a flat fee plus a for lot, or per lot fee. Lake Havasu City just has a flat fee. I think part of that is due to the fact that being a master plan community, Lake Havasu City is probably about 95% platted or was in the 60s, and so other than minor subdivisions of, you know, maybe 10, 12, 20 lots, we don't get a lot of subdivisions. So relatively speaking, it's probably not as good a comparison as the other communities that do subdivisions, probably on the same pace that, that you do them. Let's see. Oh. Also, this, this table kind of evolved. Like I said, I was originally just looking at the planning staff for the most part, but once I started putting things together, I saw a lot of common, common things with regard to building staff and code enforcement staff as well, and so I noted those, and as I was comparing Kingman, it was the most difficult to find the staff, staffing levels, because I had to go to so many different departments, and they're all noted on the bottom, you know, the fire department, and then went to the police department to find the code enforcement officers. And, and my original intent was not to, it was an analysis of the planning division. It was not necessarily to recommend a reorganization, but if you read through the report, ultimately it came down to that as well, just some helpful tips, I guess I'd call them. So the land use processes, I've, I've talked about some of these already a little bit, but the printed material, the applications, the handouts, those were great. You guys were better than most, very, very well-written, thought out. They, they should be, they shouldn't need any changes or amendments. Your submittal deadlines, including internal submittals, request for other department comments were on par with the other cities studied, and once again, I did not go through their processes either, I just went through their printed material. The application timelines, this is probably what you were implying, what is printed on the applications with regard to whether it was a conditional use or a rezoning, or in this case, subdivision as well. You were on par with all the other cities, very similar printed timelines. Now whether or not you're making those internally, don't know. Your application fees were on par with the other cities. Your internal review was similar to the, the other cities that I studied, and the reason I say similar, once again, all cities are not the same. I know that from my experience in Lake Havasu City, we have a, a program that we instituted several years ago that we call a pre-app program or a pre-application program, and you have that here as well. Some of the cities, other cities don't offer that, but I think that that, if, if it's being used correctly, I think that that is definitely an improvement. I know it helped us in Lake Havasu City quite a bit, getting those staff people to sit together face-to-face and with whoever it is, the developer, the engineer, the architect. Your internal and external communications, if I, if I analyze 10 different cities, I could probably say the same thing about all of them. This is an area where government in general can always improve, because one thing that you have to remember is that these processes that you're going through, not only professionals use them, but general citizens choose to use them as well, whether it's a rezoning, conditional use, variance, whatever it is. And you, a lot of times, there's misinformation out there that would suggest that, you know, big bad government, you're, you're dragging your feet, you're taking, you're taking your time. I, I can't tell you, in the 33 years that I've been doing this, every city I worked for, same, same thing happened. Couple of individuals, whether they were citizens themselves or professionals, come to the leadership and say, hey, they're, they're dragging their feet, they're taking too long, and there's, one of the things you have to remember is that in these, in these processes, not only do you have internal divisions that support the pro, the process, but also you have external, like utilities and other agencies, federal, state agencies that also are requested to have comments, and, and any one of those could, could hold up the program. I'm not pointing the finger, and I'm not saying, you know, it's always their fault, but I mean, you know, if, if you're asking for, let's say, comments on a, on a plat within seven days internally, and there's a fire the night before, and you're looking for a, a comment from the fire department, more than likely, you're not going to get that comment on time. And, and I'm not singling that out, it's just, it's just easy, easy reference, you know? That, it's not their priority. It's the planning division's priority to hound these things, to make sure that, you know, that, that they stay on task, number one, but that they're done in a timely manner. I know email is, in today's society, the preferred communication tool, but I would stress that, you know, staff also use, pick up the phone, face-to-face meetings, especially with citizens, because you can lose a lot in a, in email correspondence, going back and forth. And if that means that, you know, the staff has to stay on top of a particular agency or a particular division or department, you know, there's, there's ways of dealing with that, but you know, it's, it's just a matter of staff staying on top of it, and if that means you got to remind somebody every other day, then you know, that, that's what has to be done. Staffing numbers, you, you're right on par with the other cities studied. How do I go back on this? Can I, back, other way, there we go. Let me go back to the planning staff. The, in, in all the cities, we have, San Luis, for example, had three, three staff members. They had a planner, a technician, and administrative staff. Sarita had a manager as well as planners and administrative staff. Bullhead City, same thing. Lake Havasu City, same thing. And Kingman, you're, you're right on as far as the number of the, of staff. During my staff interviews, what I found is that relatively speaking, compared to the other cities, your staff has a lot less experience across the board. I think what, one of them was a five-year employee, and I think one was still under probation. That, that's pretty new to the game, so to speak. I, I think that you would benefit from some, some more experience, especially in that planning world, and as a result of that, what was, something here the other way here?
Stuart, if I may, I just want to just point out one area. So when you look at the column that says building staff.
Let me go back. Okay. Sorry.
So I mean, I, I could probably make an argument that we're a little under in that area, because their combination, the, what we have in our town or our city is we have the, basically, we have the community development manager who manages and supervises that and is also involved in the planning area, but then you have the combination inspector, and they do the plan review. So if you look up above, there's a number of independent plan reviewers plus also, and I didn't pick up on that until just now, but I do.
Well, that's one of the things that, that kind of evolved out of this study, if you will, whether code enforcement staff's included in the department or not, to me, either way, can be, it can be handled either way, but I think it's important that building and planning are together. But I also found, or I believe anyway, and, and once again, I didn't do a deep dive, I didn't check number of permits per month, I very easily could have done that, or checked annual permit numbers. I, it appears, at least on paper, that you're way understaffed in the building department. That wasn't originally part of my study, but coming from Lake Havasu City and having managed that development services department for the last four years, you have about half of what we have for building staff. I'd take it or leave it. Wasn't, wasn't originally part of my study, but that's just my opinion. Just for clarification, can I, on that one sheet, there's some slashes at the end of, are you saying that the two plan review are also inspectors, and the four officers are also do animal control? Correct. Okay. So those slashes are intentional? Yeah, that, the slashes were intentional, because it's, it's my understanding, they split those duties, and I don't know how they split those duties, having managed plans examiners as well as building inspectors, I, I don't know how they do it. I mean, I, I would be interested in interviewing those. When it says two plan review inspectors, that's just two people. Two people. Okay. That are. Juggling. Splaining up their time somehow. I, I don't know how effectively or efficiently, I'm, I'm not sure. All right, so what I did, as a result of all this information, I kind of threw together a very rudimentary reorganization chart, if you will, and, and my thoughts, at the very least, you'd want to have a development services or whatever you want to call it, department, and have a director that oversees both planning and building. As you can see, I didn't even include code enforcement in there, because that's entirely up to you outside of the scope. And once again, you'll see on, on my recommendation there, I believe, based on Kingman's size, and I, I didn't really dig into the numbers or anything, but, but to me, two plans examiners as well as two inspector positions would probably be warranted, definitely outside the purview of my review, but that, that's just my opinion. And that's really all I have. I don't, if you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Counselor Eric?
You said community development asterisk is part of the Kingman Fire Department. Jack, how involved are you guys in all of this? Like, do you know building codes?
So our, my involvement is just overall management of the division. Sean runs the division, and he reports to me. That's, that's the management of the division that I do.
I would like to just add, you will not find that anywhere else. Just, it's a good question that you have, and it's just a very unusual model, and it's something that I am going to be recommending some changes, starting probably next month to institute, so.
Can we also suggest to remove animal enforcement out of?
That was, that, that's, I've been working with the chief and the HR director, and the animal control part has to kind of stay there, but we're looking at maybe a transferring of maybe half those employees. We haven't had a thorough discussion with the staff yet, but we want to make sure, code enforcement really needs to have, in my opinion, a home down in community development, because they're enforcing a lot of the zoning codes, and a lot of the zoning codes, by communicating with the planning staff, they're staying up on top of trends and things like that, of what they're seeing when they're out in the field, and then the, the planners can then take zoning code text amendments and things like that to address zoning matters that may not be on the books yet. And so I think there's a synergy between having those staff members be in the community development department. So it's a very good observation, and yes, I, that is going to be one of the things I'm also recommending.
So I wanted to thank Mr. Schmeling for your hard work and your report today. Appreciate that. I did have a question for you, Manager Miller. Can you update us on the development services department director recruitment?
Yes, so this Thursday will be a month that it's been open, and we've only had three applications received. And so last week, I met with the director of HR and discussed having that recruitment continue, and then we're going to be trying to hit some other areas. We, we really hit pretty hard the Arizona Planning Association. They have like a newsletter, and they also have like a website. We also had publicized this in the, the Arizona League of Cities and Towns website, which is really a great resource for promoting job openings. So we're going to go ahead and have this be an open until filled, and then we're also going to have a first review date, like the first week of December, hoping that that will motivate people to get their applications in. As you're probably aware, the, the Kingman area for professional level positions, it's very hard and challenging to find like engineers and planners and, and certain positions, but it's also the, the valley, Maricopa County is also having that issue right now, because the economy's going so well that people are working in the private sector, making much more money. And so, but we did look at the, the pay range on this, and it is very competitive with our, not only neighboring cities, but also those that might actually be working currently in the Maricopa County area. So I, I, I think it's going to be one of those things that we're going to just have to try to really do a big push and try to market it the best we can.
Thank you. All right, council, we'll move on to part two. All right, part two, zoning code update discussion. The Kingman zoning code was adopted on April 6, 2021, and became effective on June 6, 2021. Over the course of the past few years, community development staff has identified a number of non-substantive, substantive corrections that are needed for the code. of non-substantive, substantive corrections that are needed for the code. Additionally, community development staff and some members of the local development community have identified a number of issues in the zoning code that are of concern and may require changes that would be substantive in nature. Staff will present these items to counsel for discussion. Mr. Osterman.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and counsel. How do you close that down?
You don't.
All right. Do you?
Just as we're trying to get that up, I just wanted to remind the counsel, tonight, this was one of the items that came out of the development forums, was to take a look at our zoning codes and bringing these up to date. Most recently, we had a number of these that were updated a few years ago. Sean is going to be presenting to you, basically, there's two different categories of zoning codes, the non-substantive and those that are considered substantive. And in front of you, you will find that you have some tables that he passed out, so he's going to get to a certain point in the presentation where it was just too difficult to project those out on the screen, and so you'll have to follow along with the paper in front of you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, sir. Again, good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This has been a long-awaited meeting for us to have and discuss these. So just a little background on this, we had, maybe? All right. So the zoning code was adopted in April of 2021, and went effective June of 2021. As Manager Miller said, we kind of have broken these down into, some of them could be some clerical errors, some needs of period, needs of this, and needs of that. And then some of the issues with the code are much more in-depth, and we'll kind of discuss those as well. But essentially, the code declares that if it's punctuation errors, misspellings, things like that, that we do not have to bring those before the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the council. Myself and staff feels that any changes that we make to any code does need to go before the, to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as council for any and all public input, just as a, just as a measure of transparency. So we've prepared both substantive and non-substantive portions of that. So essentially, I would like to start with the non-substantive zoning code corrections. For the most part, these are, when the code was written, these were things that, doing the proofreading and going through there, we realized that, okay, well, this code isn't referencing the correct code, you know, it's a number off when something was changed.
By the way, I just, so we can all along-
Right.
-the white tables, that's what he's-
Absolutely. So, yeah. There were things that were changed in the code while it was being written, that a lot of times, these things follow throughout the code, and they weren't all caught at that time to change. So that list is there, that's there, is very, very simple, essentially stating, hey, this is what the problem is, this is what we need to change it to. Do you guys have any questions on any of those? I think that majority of those are pretty self-explanatory.
I have a question.
Okay.
So after going through these, they're minimal. They're not like a lot in-depth, so to speak. So with the changes that we're making for the revised text, that's just to make it more simple and more clarification for developers or-
Correct. Yeah. So these ones, these non-substantive that we're looking at are very small errors, things that just didn't get caught in the proofreading as we went through, as we've gone through and are using the code and we're reading it on a daily basis. You know, the references, like if you, if, the best way to put it is, like, on the second page, the 4-80, the one right at the top, 4-80.070 point N, point 1, point B, the reference that's in the code actually is point 070, and it should be point 070 point G, right? So there's very small, very small things that we just need them to be correct in the code.
And that's easier for them to reference when they're looking through the codes correctly.
Correct. Yeah. So if you were, if you were to go, like, using that same example, if you were to be reading that code and it referenced you to 4-80.070, well, you're already reading in 070, right? You're reading section N in 070, and it refers you back to section G.
So to the, Mr. Osterman's point, these are really what I call the housekeeping items. They're really minor, but they are nevertheless important corrections to make. And so there's really not any real substance to these changes. And then, of course, when he gets into the others, those are, those are the ones that are really, have more potential for discussion, and, you know, there's, certainly the development community has an interest in some of those other ones on the other tables that he's going to go over. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Osterman.
So if there's, if there's no questions on the non-substantive zoning code corrections, we can move on to the substantive ones. So are there, are there any questions on those? Pretty self-explanatory.
Counsel?
Go ahead.
Any questions? No? No questions? All right.
All right. Perfect. Moving on to the more in-depth things, basically, there was, in-house, as going through here, we had identified some things as well. Members of the development community, citizens also, as they were reading through the code, also said, hey, this stuff doesn't make sense, right? So in taking that, what we did is, we had started a list, and we were, we had taken a first portion of it to the Planning and Zoning Commission to say, hey, these are some things that we're going to be bringing forward. And then we hadn't been able to bring them forward to them to have that actual substantive discussion on which direction to go. With all of that, what has happened is, obviously, counsel's gotten very involved in some of the things that are going on here, and you guys had asked that we had come and talked to you. So here, that's what this is about. We're here to talk to you about this. Some of these, some of these changes are kind of non, no-brainer changes that we know we need to make. But again, some of them, we do need to have some discussion on and get some direction from council. You know, we're kind of doing this opposite. Usually, it comes to you, and then we go back. I think it's better to start in this forum. We have the discussions about it, and then we bring those things forward so that we're not getting to the very end and have done a whole bunch of work and research, and then having to go back and do it all over again for a different outcome. So the list, the, went through this list, like you said, a lot of them are kind of no-brainers to where, again, they're a little bit more substantive, or we have multiple definitions that don't coincide with anything, and we need to take one of the definitions out, which will give it to where we're not interpreting that specific code in any different way. There's a conglomerate of things through here, again, that, we pointed out what the general issue is, as well as what we are considering and wanting to do with that. So we went through this list and basically took out the things that we felt would require some further discussion on. The first one is when it comes to the citizens' review process. Currently, as it is for anything that we're doing in reference to the general plan, plan text amendment, the conditional use permit, rezoning, any type of annexation or anything like that, we require what's called a neighborhood meetings. And we require two of them. And the initial reasoning behind that was for, for the builder or the developer to be able to have more than one meeting, so that if there was citizens in the area that weren't able to make one meeting, they can make another meeting, right? And going through that, we felt that notification by publication, notification by putting signs on the property, and then the neighborhood meetings, all the neighborhood meeting stuff takes, takes effect prior to us even starting our process. And then within our process, we're doing the same thing again. We're publishing, we're notifying all those same people and everything else. So we're kind of hitting it double and triple in some ways. For the sake of time and ease, we're suggesting that be reduced to only requiring one neighborhood meeting. And what those neighborhood meetings are, is every property owner that owns property within 300 feet of the land that is coming into question is notified by a letter. There's a sign put on the property, depending upon how big the property is, it requires multiple signs on different sides, different locations. And that's all spelt out in the code as well. So we feel that we are giving ample opportunity for the citizens to come forward and provide their issues or complaints, or to simply say, hey, we like this, we want this to happen. That doesn't happen very often, but we like to be positive. So essentially, what we're wanting to do is reduce that to only requiring there to be one neighborhood meeting that's held. So I don't know if you have any questions or further discussion as far as that goes? I'd be happy to discuss that. I'm done with that one. And it'd probably be better if we discuss each item as is.
Counselor Eric? You have a question?
Yes. Well, I love that we're reducing stuff that takes time, like from two to one. I also wanted to wonder if there was a way to add another meeting, if we wanted to or found it necessary to, if there's a way to, a tool or mechanism in place that would enable either a builder or, you know, an attendee of these meetings to ask for another meeting after some research or something. So basically, the gist of it is, I like to see the minimums come down, but with having the option to do more due diligence if need be. Like, for example, you can apply this to the, on a 3-30, the limit building heights to 50 feet. I'm kind of against limits, but I like the ability to go case by case, in a sense, you know? Does that make sense?
To some degree, yes, right? In that, in the case of the example that you're using, we do have limits on the heights of building based upon, a lot of that has to do with, okay, what are our capabilities when it comes to fire suppression? Like, all of this stuff coincides with all the other codes, the building code, the fire code, all those other things. So again, we don't want to have this gigantic skyscraper of a building and not have the resources in order to be able to effectively manage that, per se.
Yeah. Call it a bad example, but you get the gist of what I'm saying.
Right. No, I absolutely do. In the whole thing about this, the nice thing about this is the neighborhood meeting, what this is, is this occurs prior to them even turning in their application for these other things. So what this does is it gives the developer the opportunity to engage the citizens to where they could come forward and say, hey, we don't like this, right? And for this reason, this reason, or however it is. That gives the developer the opportunity to make concessions, saying, okay, well, if this is what your issue is in our design that we turn into the city, we'll go ahead and change this so that this isn't an issue. And the idea behind it is, is a lot of times what happens is, is when we go through our public hearing processes and everything else, the citizens will not come to the planning and zoning meeting, they will wait and come to the council meeting. And then they will give their opinions to the council without ever have even contacting the developer, which most times, in our experience, the complaints and things, number one, it's just about pure information, not understanding the entire project. Or the other part of it is, the developer can make these decisions before it even comes to us, so that it doesn't stop up that process. Because in that process, if it gets to the council, and the council doesn't feel that they can make an appropriate decision upon that, then it goes back and starts all over in that process, right? So that's the idea behind the neighborhood meetings. So in this case, what would happen is, is the applicant or the developer would have that meeting with the neighborhood and the citizens. And then from that point, once that's complete, they provide us all the feedback, and everybody that is in attendance, whether it was a yes, whether it was a no, what they did like, what they didn't like, all those things, they provide that information to us. And we include that in our staff report that we are presenting to planning and zoning, right? And so when, the commission, and when that happens, that's a public hearing. So we are, again, notifying, as a city, we're mailing out to all of those citizens within 300 feet and advising them, hey, this is going on, as well as we are also posting on the property, the same, the same property that's already been posted on, right? So it's just even further to make sure that we're getting that citizen involvement. And then from, on some of the things, not all of them, like contingent, conditional use permits, don't come to council. Those are done at the Planning and Zoning Commission, unless they're wanting to appeal the decision, right? Then it comes to council. Most all of the other things, they also have had that public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, then they come to council again for another public hearing, right? So after the fact, after everything's voted on and we're moving forward with the project, if a citizen or somebody comes in and says, oh, hey, we didn't know, well, we've had this, we've had this, and we've had this, right? So we've reached out, which, in all, in all, for all purposes, we're going way over what the statutes require us to do.
To answer your question? I just had a question on the meetings. It says two currently. Is there any requirement, like, they have to be 30 days apart? They have to be, so they could have two-
They cannot be in the same day. They can have one one day and one the very next day.
Okay.
The only thing that the code says is that they have to have at least one of the two meetings within a certain timeframe, which is usually in the evenings or on a weekend, so that the citizens can attend if they want, without causing them any issues with work or having to miss work or anything for those meetings.
Okay. So it's not necessarily a time saver?
It could be.
It could be.
It could be, because-
One day.
I mean, it could be, exactly. It's one of those things to where it's a lot of work for the developer to have to put on those meetings, because they do have to be in a public place, public area, those types of things. And I think we're going to be achieving the same thing by only requiring one meeting.
Okay. I mean, I support going to one meeting. I feel like there's due process in the statutory requirements that we have for the notices in the public hearings, so I would support that. Counselor?
I also support going to one meeting.
Anyone else?
Where do these happen generally?
It's up to, it's up to the developer, right? They have to be in Kingman, they can't have their meetings down in Bullhead or something. They have to be within the city limits of Kingman. They can have them out there on the site, they can have them at another restaurant or whatever. That information has to be part of what they publish. No? Nope?
Any other questions, Counselor? I'm making the assumption we're going to go down these one by one?
Not all of them. If there's something that we don't discuss, absolutely bring it up.
Okay. That's encouraging. Thank you.
No, absolutely. So we're not going through all of them. Like you said, I have picked out the ones that will, that we know is going to require discussion here.
Okay.
There will be others. I think there's, I think I only have six of these items that I want to discuss.
All right. Counselor Savage, did you have something?
No, I won't hold it. I would like to meet with you privately at some point.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Carry on.
Okay. So the next one is when it comes to tiny homes on R2, which is, oh, I didn't put that in here. The three, page 3-17, table 3-20040A and note 2. So basically, in the R2 zone, we do allow tiny homes, and what a tiny home is, is a house that does not exceed 860 square feet, right? So it is allowed on lots that are 25 by 100. In the code, the way it's written, tiny homes, then it's kind of leaves a lot up for determinant, or up for interpretation on whether they are or are not allowed on a 40 by 100 lot, because a 40 by 100 lot in the city you cannot build on, right? You have to have a minimum of 50, 50 foot wide. The philosophy on this is that the property's not large enough to have an actual home itself on there, but we don't want to just see vacant land. So if we can get a tiny home in there, by all means, we want to be able to do that so that the lots are not just sitting there as bare lots. So we just want to clear up the, clear up the verbiage to where it's very clear that you can, in an R2 lot, you can build on a 40 by 100 lot. So any questions, concerns?
Counsel? Counsel? Questions, concerns? All right.
In addition... Do I have to tell you? Oh, sorry. So forty by a hundred, in addition to twenty-five by a hundred?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Move along.
All right. So the next one is multifamily development standards. Kind of goes through and defines out what the multifamily development standards are. They're not clearly established in our text for the commercial zones. It just kind of leaves a lot up for interpretation, meaning it can be, oh, yeah, what number? All right, good call. It's going to be three dash forty-six is what the page number is. So it says, the lack of development standards for multifamily dwelling in commercial zones for densities, the minimum floor areas, and open space that's required. It's just not, it's not very much. It applies to everything outside of commercial areas, and it's very clear on that, right? So if you were to build an apartment complex, if you're building an apartment complex or whatever in the R2, R3, or R4, or the Kingman Crossing PDZ, it's very clear on that. Those same rules don't appear to apply for commercial, commercially zoned property. So we just want to add that in there to where if, all the same requirements and regulations for any of those other land types uses, apply also for commercial. So, pretty, pretty simple.
Questions? Counselor Roy?
Sean, that would cover like where they're converting that motel? Would that be, that's under a C3, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Those requirements would apply, yes. And we've already, we've interpreted it already in-house that we are, we are applying those same rules and requirements. However, it's just not a hundred percent clear in the code. This is making it into where it, the code is very clear that, yes, these standards do apply in commercial areas.
We need to do that.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? No?
Vice Mayor, if I may, just for clarity, I just want to make sure everyone understands the C3 does allow currently...
Correct.
The apartments on there. It's just that this would add additional standards that we're currently lacking.
Yes, I understood that it was allowed. It's just, we want to be able to regulate it as much as we can.
Understand.
Okay.
In the zoning code, so we're going to, we're going to talk about the setback requirements, right? So all of the different zones, depending upon the size of lot, because of the densities, how many structures that are living structures we want on those properties so that we don't have essentially large amounts of structures on larger lots, like if you have a one acre lot, we don't want you to have, you know, through, in a residential, normal residential, we don't want you to be able to build four or five different living structures. And so the code kind of gives the requirements of how far you have to be away from property lines and things like that. In the code, it also, in the table, it also states that for accessory structures, which would be for like a garage, or a shed, or any of those different things, anything that's under two hundred square feet requires what we call a minor improvement permit. There's no cost to that. That's basically, what that helps us to do is eliminate enforcement activity later on down the line because it takes us fifteen, twenty minutes to review this permit, saying, hey, you just need to move it over another foot or two. Well, then we're talking days and man-hours and being out there in the field and taking photos and having to send stuff to the city attorney's office on the enforcement side of things. This kind of is just a, hey, let's just make sure we're good from the very beginning, and that way, we don't, we don't have to look at this later on down the line. Currently, right now, it's listed that accessory structures have to, there's two separate tables. Accessory structures are also, as a part of, the rear setbacks, which, depending upon the size of the lot, it's either fifteen, twenty, or thirty feet, depending upon what that is. But there also is another section in there, and it's not very clearly distinguished where if you don't know to look in that other section, you wouldn't be able to put a shed in your yard because you have to have fifteen feet on the rear of your, of your property line, right? Well, in the case, the code does say that you can put accessory structures all the way up to four feet in, into the rear of your property line. So this is just, again, clearing up some of that information in there to where it's going to be in this table over here as well as over here. So nothing super major about that. It's just making it easier for citizens to read. So then, the next, the next one that is for...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel.
Yeah.
You have any questions? Yes, Counsel Savage.
I'm glad this came up. I had a discussion with someone, oh, six months or seven months ago, and he was wanting to put like a garage in his backyard with a workshop and all that. And he was having a terrible problem with the city on the setback issue. What exactly is an accessory building?
So essentially, any building that does not have living quarters.
But they can have utilities?
They can have utilities, yes.
So then that setback for that particular case would be four feet?
Correct.
From the rear. Okay, thank you.
Unless, unless, right? So there's, there's some differences here, right? And even with that, it's still within the same. And I think what you're, what you're referring to is, is this was an accessory dwelling unit, right? Which changes some of the rules and requirements because we don't want accessory dwelling units, which would be like a casita or something like that. We don't want those to have separate power source, separate gas source. All of that has to come from the existing residence that's there. And the reason behind that is, is we don't want people building a casita, then turning around and renting it, right? That's not what the purpose of an ADU. So that's, that's kind of where that comes from.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
All right. The next topic is going to be, when it comes to mini storage warehousing, that seems to be something we're dealing with a lot lately. The code basically says that the overall size of the storage buildings cannot exceed ten percent of the overall property, right? That is not accurate. That is not accurate. Basically, what this was...
Can you tell us, Sean, which one you're referring to?
Yes. This is going to be, three, second page, third one down, three dash seventy-five.
Thank you.
And so basically, what this comes down to is, some of the storage yards for, are mini storage warehousing also incorporate outside storage as well. And what the, it currently reads that the storage units cannot be more than ten percent. What it's supposed to read is that the outside storage area, for like if you're going to have a place to park boats, campers, things like that, cannot exceed ten percent of that land, right? So you have, you would have your building, and you also have exterior storage. And the, the reason this is, is meant to be in here is for that outside storage area. So you don't have somebody that comes in and just basically says, oh, yeah, I'm going to have a storage yard. You can bring your, your trailer or whatever into here, and we have a whole lot filled with nothing but this stuff, right? So that's what the idea behind it, that is, and we want to clarify that information as well.
Any questions? Counsel? Yeah. Counselor Walker?
So is that, is it covered or uncovered?
It would be uncovered.
Okay. So if it was covered, you could go more of the property?
Absolutely. So it would follow the same rules as if it was, like, say, a storage building, right?
If you had a building and then covered parking?
Correct.
That would combine together?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselors? All right. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a question. So kind of a relatively new trend is kind of like a, I call it micro storage. I don't know if we've been seeing this here, but we started seeing this quite a bit in the valley where people will just rent out their storage of their home, not necessarily their home, their garage. They may have a three-car garage, they may have a bay, or they may have two. And it's very similar to the whole Airbnb kind of a situation. And it's used like an app, and, and it starts getting into some potential issues. And so I wanted to see if that might be, if that's not this, you might want to add that because that's going to be coming. If it's not here yet, it will be coming soon. And it just changes the whole dynamics, just like you have with Airbnb to neighborhoods or, you know, short-term rentals. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ready? All right. So the next to be discussed is basically when it comes to solar energy systems. So something that's become a very big thing, the, let's see, let's go, let me find that for you. Say that again? Three... Oh, yep. Okay. Basically, this is, we've kind of discussed this a little bit previously, but this is, the code basically says that currently, right now, when you're putting solar on your roof, cannot be visible, visible from the right-of-way or the front of your house. That's not what the intent was of the code when it was written and this was put in here. This is one of the things that we made the interpretation, realized, hey, this is an issue. The code says that this is not what we meant. So we have been allowing it to occur to where, however, it's essentially best for the solar panels to be situated on the roof, whether it's at the front of the property, the rear of the property, the side, however it is. We are not regulating that. We, we just want to change the code to where it reflects that.
I'm happy to see this one here because it makes no sense.
Correct.
I mean, I'm no solar expert, but you go where the sun is, I think.
Absolutely. And then, on the, on the same topic of solar energies, basically, when it comes to ground-mounted solar systems, there's no minimum height that's on there for a fence to be provided around this. So if somebody has a side yard that they put a standalone solar array conglomerate out there in the side of their yard, all the code says is it has to have a fence around it. Doesn't say size or anything else. We're wanting to propose a minimum of four feet around that. And the whole reason for that is essentially is just to keep people honest so that they don't go in there because solar is very, can be very dangerous. Electrocution, it's something that we do a lot of training on with the fire department because it's live. It's always, it's always live. You're always, as long as there's light, you're always getting electricity out of those arrays. So it's kind of just a protection for the, for the people. And further on that, if somebody decides to put this in their backyard or something like that, right? Most times, they already have a fence, and it's a six-foot wall, right? So this, we wouldn't require that fencing, that four-foot fencing to be around the array if it's already around a fence isolated from the public.
That was going to be my question. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, Counselor Savage?
What about portable solar generators?
What about them?
They're not mounted, but they're in a backyard, and people can take them in and out of their house as needed. Would a homeowner be liable if someone was to come in and get hurt from those? Or mounted ones or anything like that? Is that four feet to protect who?
That's to protect people from the public, right? So if you have this, if you have this there, right? It's there, it's permanent. We want a four-foot fence around it so that kids can't come, start pulling wires, flipping switches, levers, things like that.
Thank you.
As far as the portable, I'm not sure that I've seen that. I'm sure it's there, but I don't, I don't know what application that would have because with those, that would be to power something that's isolated. I guess you could have a way to hook that into the grid and everything else, but you're not going to get the return out of it, so...
Counselors? Any other questions? Okay.
And then the other part of this is that the, in there, it required, it only allows eight feet of height, right? And so, if you don't think about solar arrays and their standalone system, they actually move based upon where the sun is and where they're getting the largest amount of sun on the arrays. It's not clear. A lot of people think that when they come in, the height requirement is eight feet. If your array turns like this, they're thinking it's from the top of your array down to the ground is eight feet maximum. That's not how we interpret it, and it doesn't read a hundred percent that way. It's eight feet from that center point, and then usually you can get a little bit more from that. And the reason why we went with that eight feet at that center point is because we don't want the arrays to be taller than what is allowed for buildings, if that makes sense. So this ensures that no matter what position the array is in, it's not going to exceed the height of the structures that are on that property.
Counselors? All right.
All right. Now comes the fun ones, when it comes to walls. Let me find this one. All right. So that's going to be four point two zero is the page number. Basically, the fences and wall heights and locations and the screening requirements for commercial and industrial uses need some clarification and basically some more detailed standards. What we're looking to do here is to clarify the fence heights in setback areas, mostly along the front of the property, right? There, if, what we deal with is, there's what we call a twenty-five-foot site triangle. And basically means from your driveway, as you're pulling out of your driveway, we can't have anything over a maximum of four feet in that area so that you're not having to creep out and look to see if any traffic's coming. It's a clear view. This just kind of clarifies that so that it makes better sense in the code. The other part of it is, is that what are the allowed screenings that are allowed in certain types of zonings? So for the C3, I1, I2, it allows for there to be fences put on properties without anything else being on the property, right? So there's some, some screening issues and things, this just kind of clarifies what... It doesn't allow, like, for instance, if you have a vehicle impound yard, the code doesn't clarify that in that specific nature, you have to have site restriction on that fence, right? So it's just kind of, again, clearing up some of those things to where they make better sense and are easier to understand. Okay. So in the C3 zone, currently, right now, there is no side yard, or, excuse me, front yard setbacks for those zones. You can have what we call a zero lot line. You can build right on the lot line. Certain portions of Stockton Hill Road and some other streets within residential, there is a buffer that we do require from the front yard setback. Currently, right now, the front yard setbacks for I1 and I2, they have a twenty-foot front yard setback and a thirty-foot setback when it's adjacent to the residential district. So if you have, we do have some areas to where, in some of the older parts of town, when the planning for the zones and what was going to be allowed to be there, essentially, back when those... essentially back when those areas were out in the sticks of where, from where the city was, those are, we do have industrial that does butt up against residential, right? Not a lot we can do about it because there's already established uses there. So what we're looking to do is to ensure that that type of thing doesn't occur again. And so we're wanting to kind of clarify essentially fences and the heights of fences and/or walls in between residential and commercial properties, that's not super clear. Storage and towing yards, again, the height of the fences and requiring it to be either a solid wall and/or site restriction. So again, just kind of clearing up some of those things. And then also clearing up in the circumstances, currently, the way it's written is that on any fence, regardless of the zoning, you can put like barbed wiring or razor wire on the top of your six-foot fence, right? We want to clarify in the code where that is and is not allowed. Obviously, in a residential, in residential setting and area, we don't want that to be allowed. But in commercial, in some areas of commercial and some industrial, that's, that's something that absolutely is needed. So we want to clarify what exactly those, those times of when you can and cannot put barbed wire or razor wire at the top of your fence. Next thing that comes up, that was, that was brought up by one of the developers that pointed the douse to us, basically, in the, in the code, it basically says, any type of utility cabinet, regardless of where it is, has to, has to have site restriction. And basically, we, in residential areas, these, in the right, these are in the right-of-way, right? These are your normal pillar boxes of electrical cable, things like that. According to the zoning code, that requires there to be a screening around that to where it's not visible. That's, that's just, it just doesn't work. It's not something that we intended for it to be. So we want to clarify essentially that anything within the right-of-way is exempt to where what we're mostly talking about here is commercial properties, industrial properties, to where we want those to be screened from the outside view. So, any questions on that?
Counsel?
I have a question. I hate to do this to you, but I'm kind of going back a little. When we talk about outside storage and screening or site obstructing, are we requiring what type of material is allowable and what's not? Did you see some of the guys putting the netting up or the blue tarp? I mean, I've seen all kinds of stuff.
Correct, correct.
So what is it specified in here?
It does specify what can and cannot be used as a solid fence.
All right.
Right, so, so it's, for instance, you can use block wall, you can use wood slats, as long as the gap between the wood slats is less than, I believe it's a half inch.
What about all the chain link?
So chain link, the way that we approach that is it has to be, whatever the, whatever the site restriction is, has to specifically be designed to work in conjunction with that fence. So in the instances where they're just putting up cloth or they're just putting that stuff, that is, that is not acceptable per the code.
That's where I was going at, because you see that six months to a year later, it's flapping in the wind.
Correct.
Then they take it down and then they never fix it again.
Correct.
And then also on the barbed wire, is there a minimum height where you want the barbed wire?
So again, that's where that comes into play is currently, right now, you can't have any, the only time you can have a wall or a fence that's taller than six feet is if it abuts to residential property, so commercial and residential, right? And that jumps up to eight feet. And so we would write in there that eight feet would be the minimum required height, right? That actually would be the fix to this, to where it doesn't take a whole lot of verbiage. We have to have a minimum of eight feet measured from the shortest side, right? You can't have that in a residential neighborhood or in any of the others. It would be a minimum of eight feet, that would be the requirement before you can put those things up there, which...
So in a commercial area, you'd have to be eight foot tall to have barbed wire?
Correct.
You cannot put it on top of a six-foot fence?
Correct.
Sean, does that cover places that already have it?
So in...
That have had it for years?
In the, in the zoning code, the way that, the way this works, right? The zoning code basically says at the time of when it was put in, it was, it was legal. But currently, right now, it is not conforming to what our code is. So as long as it's there and it doesn't change, there's no changes or anything that are made to it, we, we, we aren't going to take any action on that. Now, if they want to go in and change something, if there's certain, it's, there's, there's certain thresholds at, at what point, when you're doing, say, a remodel to a building or something like that, when you can either do your remodel, there's a cost valuation, you can do your remodel, or if you go above this certain threshold, you have to then have the entire property be brought into full compliance, so.
Obviously, I don't agree with that.
Any other questions? All right, carry on.
Okey-dokey. All right, so basically now the next thing is going to come down to some of the definitions that we need to kind of clean up. The first one would be the, in the zoning code, it includes a definition for an automotive, for automotive vehicle sales, one for service of new and one of service of used. It just doesn't make sense, one definition for all of those can, can, can be used interchangeably throughout the code. Also, at the end of it, it basically says that the use in, in, of the permit of a CC zone, we have no CC zone, that doesn't even exist, so we need to remove that. And, and so the next one would be, we have two separate definitions for what a dwelling single family is. We just want to reduce that to one that best fits where we're at. And then, any questions on those definitions? Just again, to kind of clear up and clean some things up and when we're removing an entire definition, that is considered a substantive change, so. This next topic was something that, that we kind of wanted to discuss to where there was some clarification on what the idea was behind these and take direction if any of it wants, if any of it needs to be changed. Basically, the zoning code in section 360, we have what we call our transect zones. And the only areas in town that we have the transect zones are in the downtown area. And so if we go through what these transect zones are, depending upon whether it's the T5MS, T5G, or the T4N, or the T3N, basically, all of, within all those areas, you either have a residential zoning designation and/or a commercial zoning designation. Whether in the commercial, the majority of what we have downtown here is the C2 or C3. That allows all uses that are within the C2 and all uses that are within the C3 except for those that are listed on the list down here below. And the whole idea behind that is, is when these transect zones came into play, the idea of what the downtown area was going to be was we were going to have a lot of foot traffic. Basically, we wanted certain areas to be safer for the citizens. Again, it comes down to the look of the area. A lot of times, a lot of our issues and code enforcement issues have to do with businesses that have to do with automotive, right? They have transmissions or they have grease everywhere, they have all kinds of different stuff. It's just not, doesn't, doesn't look good, right? So this was kind of something that we kind of brought in here saying, hey, no, we don't want any of these specific types of businesses within these transect zones.
Go ahead.
That, that was put in, in 2021.
There's a lot of businesses down in the downtown area that are on it and you're going to prevent that from continuing?
That is, that is what the, that's what the idea was. So if they're, if they're there and they're, and they're in existence, again, it's legal non-conforming. Once something goes to change and those automotive businesses are no longer there, you can, you know, you could sell that business or continue business of that like type that's there. But once that occupancy changes and there's no longer an automotive business, it cannot go back to an automotive business.
So they...
I, I addressed this before with Sean and Manager Foggan when I realized what it was and I disagree with this. And I asked if notices went out to all these property owners because there are a lot of automotive people there. There was a transmission shop that closed down for a while, now he's trying to open back up. He, you know, he can't do that. At one point, he was trying to get a motorcycle repair and accessory business in there. They told him he couldn't go in there. And I asked, were these people, the owners of the properties notified? Well, no, well, we, we put it in the paper. I'm like, no, I think every one of these owners needed to have a certified letter saying you need to come to this next meeting because we're discussing the future of your zoning. Because once that business closes down, and the way I took it, if, if they're not doing that type of business within six months, their zoning reverts. So we're devaluing their property. And a lot of these properties are owned by, you know, out-of-state people or people that are, you know, that's not their business if they're renting the building. So we've just degraded their, their zoning and we've, we've downed their assessed value, could be going down.
So I had a question as well. So you talked about in the instance of a sale. So if an automotive shop sells, it changes ownership, they can't sell it as an automotive shop?
They can.
They can't.
It can continue.
Okay, so as long as it's, so if there's any lag in what the business is doing and it doesn't do automotive-type things, then it reverts back, yeah? I'm not, I'm not a fan of this one either. Yes, Counselor Eric?
So like in certain circumstances, let's say during COVID where everyone shut down for six months, you shut down for six months, you could discontinue business and then you have to reopen it, would you have been able to reopen?
Absolutely, you would have been able to. I mean, in, in that case...
So length of closure doesn't so much matter as long as it's paying taxes?
So vacant, right, vacant, meaning, okay, this business that's here, they close down and they go somewhere else? Or they aren't using that property for that anymore? Basically, it's been shut down for longer than six months. Specific use, if it was automotive, if it's now listed on this list of not being allowed, we would not allow it.
I personally think this tran, transit zone, it's, it's eight blocks, Sean? Where's it run from?
It runs from essentially...
First or second?
Is it the whole blue section on this map?
Yes. There we go. So from First Street all the way to Eighth Street, yep, you're correct.
And none of these property owners were notified. You know, they got, it was in the paper, they should have came, that's what Foggan told me. I think we need to take this whole thing and throw it out?
I do too.
And, and if we want to bring this back, and I understand why you want it, but we need to notify every single property owner, we're going to have a hearing.
Well, I don't, I don't understand why they even want it. That's Route 66. If you get off in any city between here and Chicago and go on Old 66, they have not eliminated automotive along those corridors. I just came from Grants, New Mexico, I spent the night there. There's all kinds of automotive along there, the same way in Albuquerque. And you're taking away, yeah, I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to make it a walking area, but there's people that have owned these businesses for generations, families, and it's always been an automotive business. And, and now you're telling them if, if you sell that, that can't remain an automotive business? I think that's dead wrong.
No, so a little, little bit of clarification on this. You, you can sell it as an automotive business and it can continue to be used as that, right? As long as there's no gap.
Within narrow limitations.
Right, and, and we can increase that, I mean, however, that's, that's what we're here to discuss, right? But like in the, in the case of what brought this all about is it was an automotive business, it was no longer an automotive business and was opened up as something else. And now somebody's coming in and wanting to come back in as an automotive business. That, in that case, it, it's not allowed, right? And again, we're here for, for discussion on this. I'm not going to give the opinion of staff on this because maybe we do, maybe we don't like it.
I...
Any other?
Nice, there's...
Yes.
When we voted this zoning ordinance in, if you got, and not everybody was here, but it was how many pages? And we asked, and I asked Ron that night, if we didn't like something here, we could come back and revisit it? And we were told, yes. When I approached him in his office, and that's when he brought Sean up, he had, no, we're not doing it.
But you're telling us today that we, we can...
Absolutely.
Section this out.
Absolutely.
It can go before P and Z and then come back up to council.
Absolutely.
And can we notify every property owner that's affected?
Absolutely, if that's what we need to do, absolutely.
Is that what the council thinks?
Okay. So do you have comments, Counselor Staley?
Yeah, I have a question about a compromise in saying businesses that are currently in automotive, that, that property has the ability to stay automotive, but we don't expand new automotive businesses? Because there are, you know, some open lots, and, you know, on Andy Devine and maybe that, we don't want to encourage more tire shops to locate along there? Because that's what I think the purpose of this was, is there... When you talk about Dutton Motors, that is a really cool building. They have a great display window, they have neat cars in there, that fits with Route 66 and tourists love seeing that.
Absolutely.
But then you go up several blocks and now there's another business that's a, it's a trailer, it's a fence with the, with the material blowing in the wind, it's piles of tires, you know? That, that is not necessarily helping the image of our town or drawing and new tourists. So I'm wondering if there's a compromise here to say, if, if you have one of these businesses that, that's on that list, this list, you will not be affected by this. However, we are not going to let those vacant lots be a car wash, an equipment rental yard, which I have a family member that owns an equipment rental yard. But, you know, it's not necessarily something that we want in this section of town that is trying to promote tourism and retail businesses.
Can I jump? Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Ward?
Isn't, isn't that a code enforcement issue?
It is, but they're grandfathered in, right, with their trailer and...
To some degree, yes.
All these things.
It is, it is to some degree a code enforcement issue. However, majority of the time, because of the size of the lot and the spacing that's there, that, that could be a, we, we could go, we could go down a lot of different roads on that when it comes to code enforcement, but essentially what it comes down to is there's not a violation.
Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, I just wanted to address Counselwoman Staley's option, which just sounds fantastic, but the lawyer had to be here, I apologize. But what you're talking about basically, it's called spot zoning, which is illegal and we can't do that. You generally, you just have, you're going to have to set a zoning area in whatever allowed uses or not allowed uses.
You can't grandfather, that's what I'm talking about.
That's exactly what happens right now. That's what's currently in place. Those properties are grandfathered in and they are allowed to exist as that use, but they're, as Sean's saying, non-conforming. Once that use stops, then that non-conforming use goes away and they can't come back. And that's standard in zoning across the country. That's how zoning works for those non-conforming uses. Again, not advocating for or against it, but your solution is not a possible solution. And I just, I would like to point out that when we did this, we had a particular council member that was really interested in the transect zoning. And I think that's where a lot of this information came from. And that was kind of, and I don't want to blame one person, but that was kind of, there was a push to do, adopt these new form-based zoning, which allows these certain types of uses, these compatible, commercial and residential type uses. And then as it plays out, these are restrictions that, well, as the council didn't get a chance maybe to go through all 500 pages.
We were told we could come back.
But we can come back anytime. You are allowed, because the council sets the code, the council adopts the code, it's your document and you can say, this is what we'd like as long as it's legal or what we don't like and we will address it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cooper, Mr., Counselor, oh, I'm sorry. Were you done?
No. So then the timelines you were talking about, expanding these timelines... No. Um, so then the timelines you were talking about, expanding these timelines where, um, you give them 10 years. If they weren't working as a transmission shop, they have 10 years to come back and make it a transmission shop again. What about that, Mr. Cooper?
I'm gonna say I have no idea because I've never heard of anybody doing anything like that. I would say that would be probably incredibly difficult to enforce because I, I would say it's wrong.
It comes, it comes down to record keeping and all actuality and it's-
But it will allow them to, to keep that use and not allow the expansion of more of those businesses in the-
Uh, without having that exact detailed knowledge on the top of my head, I would hazard a guess to say that probably would not fit within what the normal standards are in zoning according to case law. But I can look.
We can definitely explore it. I mean, that, the, the options on the table, absolutely.
Counselor Eric?
Yeah, can we also make sure that, I mean, or at least talk about letting these companies expand if they want to? You mentioned someone going into a motorcycle business on top of, you know, their transmission business. And I would hate to stifle growth, especially with classics and automotive stuff like on Route 66. I, um, and also, that's, that drive-through retail restaurant, that's talking about fast food, right, specifically?
It's anything, any type of drive-through.
Mister, would any of those affect Mister Dees?
Mister Dees is not a drive-through of any kind.
But I mean, like, um, being automotive or being a restaurant, if another company like Mister Dees wanted to open up with these rules, would they be able to? Having a restaurant, having cars.
Two total, they're two totally separate properties, totally separate businesses.
Oh.
Right.
Okay.
So Mister Dees is a standalone property and it's, it's treated as such. And then, yeah, so I mean, it's the, the, the same owner owns the property. It's just the actual uses on those specific properties are, are different.
So one of those properties would not be allowed if this was to go through?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
If, if they were to, if they were to close down and be closed down for six months, they couldn't come back and reopen.
Could they put, if they were to, if someone wanted to open that business as one business, they wouldn't be able to? Because it would, the second half would nullify the first. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Counselor Eric. Counselor Walker and then Counselor Savage, did you want to reply?
Yes and no, but no, but yes. So I mean, it's, it's kind of the, the stance that we try to take is finding a way for somebody to do something if it fits what happens here. The problem that we have here is the code specifically in detail says, no, you cannot do this. The code is what lays this out, right? And so that's where we come into issues. In, in the situation that Councilman Walker is talking about, again, what had happened on those two properties is the properties had been adjoined illegally with the buildings. So it was all a part of one building. They cut the two buildings off, cut those doorways and connections off. Completely different property, same owner. Different business opened up over here on this property. This property over here had the existing business that was occurring, right? And that, that business is still there, right? But now that you've closed this business down and it, and it, the, the building's been vacant, nobody's used it for well over six months, right? With, with that timeframe, somebody wanted to come and open an automotive business back into there after it's already been changed is, is not allowed. It's the same, it's the same principle as, so all the residences that we have along Beale Street here. It, the same thing is if it's currently being used as a residence, you can continue to use it as a residence. But the second it goes from a residence to a commercial building, I mean, used as a commercial building, it cannot go back to being a residence. So it's, it's kind of, it's kind of the same, the same philosophy and principles being applied in both. It's just that one has to do with automotive, one has to do with residences in commercial. And so we have this, we have this problem throughout all of the transact zone. Uh, in this, this particular case, what brought this is about is it is specifically defined as what, what wanted to go into this, into this specific building was defined as an automotive business, right? So, um, there, there may be some things that we can do when it, when it comes to the definitions of what these things are and, and break those out even more specific and more particularly. Um, but from what I'm understanding, what City Attorney is saying, it's ea- it's either a yes or a no. It's not a hey, an in-between thing. And in the planning world, the limited, um, last two and a half years of education I've had on it, that, that does coincide. It is, this is the land use, this is what you're allowed to do here, or this is what you're not allowed to do here, right? And then it starts falling into the, to, as it says, the spotted planning, which is a big no-no because you can, again, in the example that Councilwoman Daly brought up, we all know that that's an issue, right? But we can't pull them out and say, yeah, no, you can't do this here, when it isn't allowed use.
Okay. Counselor Walker?
My problem is not that that business can't go back in there. It's the people were never notified and I think that six-month window is too small. I think we need to kick it out, re-advertise it, make sure they all know that their zoning could be devalued, you know, or there could be change, which will devalue their property if they were always planning on having automotive in there. If it, I think we need to make that window bigger, that maybe it's a year, maybe it's two years. But I understand that eventually if they close down, that, you know, that's not the best business for that area. But if these people have a, a model for their business, that they're rentals, and all of a sudden you were empty for six months and you come back in to get a nap, a, um, a business license and they tell you, sorry, you can't do that. That's not good. I mean, I get, we, I, my, my opinion, we need to make that window bigger and we need to, um, relook at this.
Counselor, Counselor Savage?
You took some of the words out of my mouth. Yes, I think that timeframe should be a little longer. We're investing a lot of money into downtown right now. We want people down there and to have buildings vacant, sitting there in anticipation that another particular type of business is coming back. We want the revenue coming into the city and having those filled with tenants and owners. So, um, we still got a lot of work on this, but I do definitely think six months is too short.
Any other comments? All right.
Vice Mayor, um, so before we conclude, I just wanted to ask if there's anything else either that you've heard from other residents or the development community. This is a great opportunity to give staff direction of maybe something that does not exist in the zoning code. Um, but I just wanted to bring that up at this point before we conclude.
Manager Miller. I believe I have the autonomy to call a member from the audience to ask if they have anything to add. Is that correct?
All right. I'd like to call, um, either one of you, whoever would like to come up and speak. Tyler?
Good job, Sean. Need to get him a water bottle, all that talking. Uh, appreciate it, Vice Mayor and council members. I was real involved with the, the zoning change at the time. They had a really good public outreach and invited members of the public to come in like work groups and ask what they would want to see and change and things. And we thought the process was really done, really well done at the time. They even asked me to write a recommendation letter to the state to get an award for the rezone. So everyone was real happy when it was approved. But then afterwards, everyone realized there were some things in there that never did get discussed with the, the governing, the decision body, and a lot of those you covered today. One of them that, that wasn't, that I thought, I've always thought, um, may need to be redecided was the metal buildings thing. And it's a little bit complicated how it, how it is in the code. And I'd be completely fine with it if you guys had decided at the time, we no longer want metal buildings anywhere in Kingman, like a basic, like the cheapest metal structure. And I don't build these. I, I build houses. But if you decided you don't want metal buildings anywhere, it should never be allowed, and then that would be great. But that's not what happened. But in the code, the way it is now, you're not allowed to build just a straight, basic, like mechanic shop anywhere in Kingman. It has to at least be covered by some percent of facade, like 70%, I think. Which, if that's what you want, is fine, but that's not what you decided. That just ended up being in the code, wasn't discussed with public. And some of our homebuyers say, I want a new house in Kingman. I plan on building a shop. Okay, what kind of shop? Metal shop in my back. Well, you can't, can't build in the city limits. Let's go look in the, in the county properties we might have there. So that's, discussion has happened with our customers. We don't build metal buildings, so I don't really have skin in the game, but you guys never got a chance to really decide whether you wanted to do a moratorium on those cheap, uh, metal buildings or not. And then the other item in the code is as costs have increased for building and, um, interest rates, affordable housing has been harder and harder to achieve locally and for our customers. And so we're looking at future projects, trying to do more higher-density areas to, you know, you just divide your development costs by a higher number. You know, the streets, the utilities and everything, try to get a little smaller. Um, there is a, a zoning mentioned in the zoning code, R15A, that was a conglomerate for some of the old zones, R2s and, and some of the planned development districts that allows for smaller lots, like a 5,000, 4,000 square foot lot, and for a zero lot line, which means you can build a house and a house that are connected so that the property line is shared by a, a shared wall of those buildings. And then you could have, uh, the garage and a side yard on the other side. And so you can do a duplex, but with different ownership. And so construction-wise, that would help get a price point lower. The, the lot doesn't have to be as big because you don't waste 10 feet in between. They're, they're shared and you can, um, share a wall with, with construction. And so we're planning to, to do some rezoning for that, but realized in the code, you can't rezon straight to R15A because it says that zoning is only for properties that, that got rezoned by adopting this zoning code. So it's not something I can go seek R15A. You have to do something else. But I do think it would be a really good zoning for designated areas. They'd have to go seek this zoning and get it and you could do a higher-density affordable product with some shared walls and some, some smaller minimum setbacks. So those are my, my two, uh, two comments, but, but thanks for the chance to share.
So Tyler, are you referring to, uh, like a townhome?
I, I don't know what the city's definition is exactly because in most other places, a townhome is multi-story and Kingman doesn't really do well with multi-story. 80% of our buyers are retiree and they don't want to do the stairs. But, but I don't know what the definition would be of a-
Okay.
A townhome. But it basically be, like, we want to, in the future, do some subdivisions that are like a duplex or maybe a triplex with shared walls.
Sure.
Right now, you can do duplexes on any residential zoning in the city, but it has to be on one parcel. And then that kind of defeats the affordable housing because then you're like in a landlord situation a lot of the times. So we would want, where half of it could be owned by one person, half of the other. And almost none of Kingman is currently zoned that way. And so if, if a developer such as ourselves wanted to do it, if we had R15A that we could go straight to, it, it might make a lot of sense for, for affordable housing in the future, but-
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I see Sean ma- making some notes. So, thank you.
So just, just, I think the, the point that Tyler's trying to make on that. So in the R16 zone, right, which means you have to have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, we do allow zero lot lines, right? You can do what he's saying, but I think what he's saying is rezoning it to where, hey, we're, we're taking away 10 feet of what needs to be between these. Why do our lots, minimum lot size have to be 6,000 square feet in those zones? So definitely something we can look into. Um, it, it, it does make sense.
You can't do that in R16. You have to have a five-foot setback. You can't have a shared lot line for R16. That's the definition, single family detached.
So you're saying, yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking in the R2. You can do that in the R2, but not in the R16. Okay. I got you.
Well, we make, making some notes. We're, we're good. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Counselor Savage?
On Gates Avenue, um, the townhomes that are there, and then there was a fairly newer duplex built there. What are those zoned between Gates and Golf Drive and up by, towards the Elks?
I, I don't know what they're zoned. I'd have to look at the zoning map. Um, I, I- I think that was a, yeah, PUD or it's now called a PDZ. But yeah. And the, I mean, there, there's ways, there's ways currently in the code to do what Tyler's talking about. Uh, but there's also some other ramifications in there that it would require, I think, more land than what we want to do it with. Um, you could do like a PDZ, which, which does allow smaller density, this types, this type of thing. However, you, I think, I don't, I don't remember what the minimum amount of acres are that you have to have in order to be able to do that. Um, and just some background on that is there was, um, essentially, um, just over there on Eastern, right? Um, Eastern, Southern, Eastern, the, those buildings that are there, right? That was something that was used previously on just the one-acre lot. So you have this complex that's built here and then the next complex that's built here. The zoning over here is C, I believe it's C3. But then this over here is a PD, a, a planned development unit where the rules are completely different. So here we are trying to get businesses in there and because of the decision made at that time, it just doesn't, it just didn't fit. It was, it was a, what, something that was used to get around the code. And so in order to get away from that, we, we brought in a minimum amount of land that it took to be able to do a PDZ. So that's something that we can look at as well. Um, I'm, I personally like the idea. Um, I, I think Tyler and I, Tyler and I have had a conversation about this before, but I just don't remember. Um, so that's definitely something we can look into as well.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
All righty.
Appreciate it. Counselor Eric?
Just a totally different topic. For, as Kingman grows and in the future as we annex land, um, it seems like after we went to the groundwater symposium the other day, it seems like our only defense against these huge farms with the, with the ability to tap into our aquifers is our zoning as a city. Is there something that we can kind of just flash a light on to make sure we have that in mind when we?
Yes. Um, there, there is to agree within the city, right? So, um, and, and that's actually a topic that's being added into the general plan as we're working forward is water conservation. The issue that we have is where these farms and these places are coming in, tapping into our aquifer is not within the city. So, so that would have to be something that would be on a county-wide basis. Um, I, I think we, we could support the county and I, I believe we recently have um, supported the county in some of their decisions for some of their rezoning and things because it does affect the citizens of the city.
So the, 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 what I was wanting to say is like, as we annex more land, having something in place that would put, once, once it becomes within our city limits, that there is zoning in place that kind of addresses that issue. Whether it's growing out towards the airport or towards, you know, Long Mountain. I know all that place is primed, so-
There's, there's two answers to this. The first one is yes. And the second one is that's a long ways out of the city.
Mr. Cooper?
So-
Yeah, just regarding annexation, when you annex, uh, some property, you, the, when it's brought into the city limits, it has to be, uh, it already has zoning out in the county. So whatever zoning has out in the county, when you bring it into the city, it has to be as nearly compatible to what the county's zoning was. Now, that doesn't mean that that property owner can't talk about doing a rezoning request to change the uses on that property. But again, like I say, we have to comply with what they currently zone when they're outside the city limits.
Right.
But it's an option, definitely.
And, and just, just another thing, when it comes to the general plan and, and planning, right? We do actually, um, extend our planning beyond the city boundaries just for that thought of, hey, annexation might take, might take place here. So we, we put it out there and it's something that the, the county also looks at when, and takes into considerations as well. But it's not something that's set in stone because it's not within the city. So that's, that's something. But ag- again, the properties that, that we're, we're talking about, um, tapping into our aquifers and everything else, we're, we're talking about miles and miles and miles outside of the city. So-
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that, Sean.
Um, I'm pretty much done. Basically just need to say that there's no action needs to be taken today. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you for the items. What's gonna happen with this is as staff, we're gonna go back, we're gonna discuss the things that, um, input you guys have given, um, come up with what we feel is gonna meet all of your requests and everything else. Um, that will then go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation and then we will be back to see you. I don't know when, hopefully soon, but we'll, we'll be back to see you at some point.
Thank you. We look forward to it. All right. Moving on to item number three, executive session, KX Ventures Development Agreement pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4. The City Council will go into executive session to discuss and provide direction regarding the KS, KX Ventures Development Agreement. I need a motion, please.
I move we go into executive session.
We have a motion. I have a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor are going into executive session. Aye. Aye. Anyhow, want to post?